Thank you, Peter. This is Ray Weldy, Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the December 2nd, 2020 work session. It's currently 6:32 PM. Before I go any further, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Ms. Cummings for a short time, and Ms. Cummings would like to make a statement.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Kusaratus won't be joining us this evening. He had sent me a statement that he'd like me to read. Mr. Kusaratus will not be able to attend tonight's meeting due to the passing of his mother. If we could keep his brother and his children here, he would truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And we express our condolences to Kim and his family on the passing of his mother. It's a sad day yesterday and today and the upcoming days for everyone. And me and on behalf of the board, we'd like to express our condolences to Kim and his family. If there's anything he needs or his family needs, please reach out to us, and we wish him the best moving forward. It's just a sad day.
Yeah, you bet it is, boy. That's a tough time, tough time.
Yeah, we're really sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Sue. Joe, do you want to take over from here?
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
As far as tonight, what we'll do is we'll go over the budget aspect one more time. To be approved for tonight's meeting. Agenda item number two is the adopting of the final annual operating budget, which is your general fund budget. Your revenue, projected revenue for 2021 is $10,582,736. Your projected expenditures for appropriations is $11,996,000. I'm sorry, $11,996,675. And your potential reserve that would be impacted or utilized is $1.413 million. So, right now, what we're seeing is for 2020, we have a potential exposure in the general fund, about $800,000 to $1 million that would be potentially eaten from our reserves. Like I said in the last meeting, from, I believe, when I first started here, our unassigned reserve balance was basically around $2.4 million. Through fiscal prudence, we've been able to build that up to about $4.2 million right now. So, that $4.2 million reserve will actually help us get by for the 2020 year, as well as the 2021 fiscal year. So, you'll end up using potentially in next year, $1.4 million in reserves hypothetically, thus leaving us with about maybe $1.6 billion in reserves if we end the year fairly decently in 2021. We're going to continue to monitor all your real estate transfer taxes, your earned income tax, your mercantile and BPT tax, your LST tax. We're going to keep an eye on Mike's building permit aspect, and that's based on how the economy goes, of course. And potentially, we're going to have two inter-fund transfers that would be coming in to buttress up the operating fund or the general fund budget. The one being coming from the operating reserves hypothetically, if we need it, we would be pulling $1 million from there. And as far as the capital reserves, if needed, we would be pulling about $300,000 there. Again, this is just potentials or hypotheticals, but I wanted to give us the flexibility as we head into the 2021 year. And by doing those transfers, that should help us and assist us if needed. Again, we will be monitoring the expense side, and each department head basically will have to heed their appropriations and spend wisely going into the next year. As far as your typical expenditures that we have for next year, your general government expense is at $688,000 for next year. And again, that is a high-level appropriations. We probably won't use that amount, but I build in extra appropriations just in case we have any emergencies throughout next year. The general government building plate, we have $201,000 budgeted. As far as finance administration, which is basically your software costs, your audits, et cetera, we have $142,000 listed there. As far as the police appropriations, again, taking into consideration, if emergencies occur throughout the year, we have $7.6 million set aside for them in appropriations. I doubt we'll be even near that, but I just want to make sure that we're covered just in case. As far as the fire marshal office, again, we will be doing some revamping in that department and reassigning things. We have set aside $463,000 for the fire marshal's office. As far as protective inspections, which is basically your zoning area, we have set aside $490,000 in appropriations. Public Works, again, we have basically $1 million set aside for appropriations there. Public Works, again, has a myriad of pockets or funds to use, not only just in your general fund, but right now, just in this general fund that we're speaking on tonight, $1 million is set aside there. We also have the library fund transfer of $500,000 for this year. We also have the rescue fund transfer for this year of $240,000 to assist them on their initiatives. So, again, we're going to keep an eye on the expenditure side, and we're going to actively and proactively monitor our revenue, as well as our collection efforts as we go into the 2021 year. We will be most likely using some reserves, but again, our job is to mitigate whatever type of financial exposures that we can't control. Again, if the governor and/or the county impact us in different ways, there are things that we can't control, and that may impact the revenue side, as well as our expenditure side, but we'll do our best there. And that's for item number two. Are there any questions on that?
I don't have any, Joe, no.
Okay. I just want to go into the detail, kind of, if we need to go into weeds, we can. If not, you know, I'm going to try to provide as much, you know, explanation for tonight, especially when we go into the real meeting. As far as the agenda item number three, which is the capital reserve fund, basically, we have revenue down for $2,900. With that being said, that particular revenue bucket doesn't include anything from RDA grants. We won't find out, most likely, until next week. The projection to be there could be anywhere from $200,000 to maybe, if we're lucky, to be in the $500,000 arena. But as far as the revenue, right now, we have it very conservatively, just at $2,900. And on the expenditure side, we have it maxed out with the appropriations if everything comes to fruition. And also, that's if we don't get any RDA grants, and I don't think that's going to be the case, but we actually have to have the appropriations there to take care of it in case we need to act. In there, you have $1.264 million in expenditures in the capital reserve, basically utilizing or using a potential reserve of $1.26 million for the capital reserve fund. Any questions on the capital side, capital reserve?
I have a question about the RDA. How is that being run this year? I know normally you go in person and you state your case.
Well, we did, we did, actually, all the department heads that put in grants, we acted, we went there, and we had face-to-face meetings, again, socially distancing ourselves and for the most part masked up. But we did do that, and it was just like a normal setting that we did every other year. Or you could have did a PowerPoint presentation. We'd rather go in person and handle it that way. So, we did, as well as a lot of the other townships did it that way, too. So, they were very nice and receptive to what we had, you know, with our requests, and we'll see how it plays out. All right, and then the next one would be item number four, which is your sewer capital reserve fund. In it, we have revenue of $105,000, which basically is a transfer, $100,000 coming from the regular sewer fund, as well as an interest component. And that's how you get to the $105,000. As far as expenditures coming out of sewer capital reserve, Mark probably has some pumping station activity going on there. So, we built in $254,000 worth of appropriations there, just in case. I believe right now, in this given year, we will be paying out around $71,000 for some pumping station activity that I'll be, I believe that will end up being paid in the 2020 year. As far as potential reserve, we would be utilizing hypothetically $149,000. Again, the appropriations are maxed out. I doubt we use that amount, but just in case if we need it, we have it. And you'll be carrying a reserve of $1.15 million as you end the year, that we're going into 2022. So, any questions on sewer capital reserve? Okay, not hearing any. We'll move on to the library capital reserve, which is item five. Again, this is the capital side. The revenue is basically a contribution of $10,000 and an accumulation, a small amount of interest. So, that's how you get to $10,500. Your expenditures or appropriations, we budgeted $20,000 for them in that giving year. Typically, that would be, let's say, for air conditioning units, heating units, or so forth like that. They have a potential reserve that would be utilized in 2021 for $9,500. If they end that year accordingly, they would still have a decent side reserve of $47,500 sitting inside for library capital. Any questions on that? Okay, now hearing you speak, we'll move on to item six, which is the operating reserve. In that one, again, that typically is fine for us if needed. In this given year, we have about $7,500 in projected revenue sitting there. Expenditures, and this goes back to what I discussed on the general fund side or operating fund side, is the potential usage of $1 million in the transfer. You would still, the potential reserve that would be utilized is basically the $7,500 less than $1 million. The reserve would be $992,500. We would still end up having a reserve of $778,000 sitting in the sideline for 2022 if needed. So, again, fiscal prudence over these past years has come into service during this COVID budget. And, you know, I think financially, we're going to have to, you know, just monitor and be proactive defensively and just take it from there, but I think that we should get by in 2021. 2022 could be a little bit more challenging, and again, it all depends if we, you know, have some major close downs or loss of tax revenue, not real estate tax for the most part, but the other associated taxes that we have. So, that's basically what I have on those various agendas. Tonight, you're going to be Matt, and this would be more of Frank, and Ms. McVendham, dealing with your Love Grove side. Matt, did you want to talk on that part?
Hold on just, Joe, can I ask you one question about the library?
Sure.
Okay, I know you went over the library's capital reserve budget, but the budget, we went back and forth with the library over several meetings. Is the final budget, operating budget for the library going to be the budget that we presented at the last go-around with them, and they'll make do with that?
Yes, yes. Basically, it's actually listed on our website at the front desk. It's open, particularly, it's reviewable by any resident and/or individual, but to answer your question, yes, it is, and it talks about the $500,000 transfer, how they whack up their expenditures, basically, basically, and then the transfer is the main component of that, as well as if they take, you know, take initiatives with the donation aspect. And part of our job, I think, is, you know, as a township manager and possibly as the board, is that we want to help actively recruit individuals or make donations to the, or have residents make donations to the library, especially since they, too, have a challenged fiscal budget this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Matt, did you want to speak? And Frank, do you want to speak quickly on the Love Grove leads?
Yep, good evening, everybody. To need to review this, I believe it was in all the supervisors' packets as a draft. I just wanted to go over what some of the changes were. So, in the draft that was included in your packet, it's supposed to have a three-year lease. That's a change from the previous two-year lease. It'll give them a little bit more stability, knowing that they'll be there for a longer period of time. One of the other issues was, we changed the written notice of termination to 180 days, and that's, again, just what we all felt was a reasonable request based on the growing season, which would be more than or about six months out. So, now, one of the biggest things that we included, it was under the major repairs, improvements, and fixtures. I know we had discussion at length regarding the shipping containers and the equipment storage area and the necessary need for your screening, be it arborvitae or vegetation, some type of fast-growing evergreen would become in the second year. And in the first year, it would be a combination of annual grasses and/or large branching flowers for that approximately 150 feet along Bridgetown Pike to try and block that line of sight there along the frontage of Bridgetown. Other than that, the lease stayed the same. There were the only changes. Everyone in the Play Wiki Farm Foundation had an opportunity to review that. I worked closely with Mr. Dillon to actually get it into the lease. And unless the board has any questions, it'll be on the agenda for your consideration this evening. And Love Grove is on this call as well, so if you have any specific questions for them, shoot.
Matt, I just questioned, does everybody understand when you talk about and what you're going to do? I've asked you about it, and you've told me that there's an understanding between everyone exactly what's going to be done?
Yeah, I can talk about that a little more. We were down at the farm, and we measured the entire area. The shipping containers themselves are 42 feet long. In order to get from every angle that a car would be driving by, it's about 150 feet along that frontage that would be provided with screening. In the first year, it's going to be the grasses and/or the branching large flowers, something like sunflower. To then, in the second year, hopefully have the arborvitae and/or other fast-growing evergreen. The reason we put it in there is to be of one-year expectation, and then the expectation for the second year is to plant the arborvitae's and expect them to be 10 feet tall in a month. It's not realistic. So, the tall grasses would be growing in front of the arborvitae for the first year. In the second year, we hope that the arborvitae would then be tall enough and sort of grown together to where they would provide that screening that we're all looking for.
And the two, I guess, the two reps from Love Grove are fine with this? That sounds doable to them, like that this is a viable plan?
Hi there, yeah. This is Brad. Yeah, yeah. Good, how are you? How are you?
Good.
Um, yeah, that sounds, that sounds good to us.
Okay.
It sounds doable.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to say, in the first year, just like Matt said, we would put the, plant the grass, and in the second year, have the grass growing also. Okay, so I don't know if that was me, but I apologize. I was just saying that in the second year, we'd have the grass still growing in all likelihoods so that, so that the screening is provided essentially, with the arborvitae planted as well, just so that, you know, we're covering our bases that way.
Okay.
Pretty comfortable that that would cover the shipping containers that you have from the road?
Yeah, and it's, it'll, it's pretty much the best we can do. We also talked about, on the other side, outside the leasehold, potentially putting some trees up there, which we will likely do right into the lease, but it would also help just kind of cover some more angles possibly.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you're making a nice effort for it. Thank you for that. Okay?
Of course. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're happy, we're happy things are going well, so.
Good. The $1,000 is still okay with you guys?
It's in the lease.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, thank you. The other item that we have tonight is...
Well, before we continue, so under the lease or signature, who would be signing that? Matt? Or would Matt be the representation of the township on the lease?
Yeah, I signed the first one, and I figured with your approval tonight, I'd have no problem doing it again.
But we would, we would need to make a motion to approve it as a board first to authorize Matt then to execute the lease?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, as far as item number eight, that is dealing with Zelenovsky Axlerod, that is our CPA accounting firm. They would be auditing the township accounts for fiscal year 2020. The fee is not to exceed $28,500. They also do a component for the RDA grants, and typically, that has been $2,000 per grant, but not to exceed $10,000 in total. Since we only submitted four applications this giving year, our max exposure in the RDA grants is the 10K. So, we would need to get that approved for tonight also.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
This has always puzzled me. If we have, what do the, like, there's elected auditors for the township. There's two or three. I don't know how many there are, but there's a group of them. And do those auditors do anything similar to what we hire Zelenovsky Axlerod for? Or do they do something different? Or is it, I don't know, I never, do you know?
I mean, basically, the elected auditors or appointed auditors that you may put on, they are basically, how do you say, it's based off of your township codes. It's an allowable thing as far as having independent certified public accountants looking out, looking over all your accounts and looking over your financial position in a given year. That certifies and gives you a level of comfort. The elected official or the elected auditors that you're saying, it's a totally different animal. This in particular, you know, they're independent, so they're, you know, if something is awry, part of their job is to notate and have any type of findings or, you know, whether give you a disclaimed audit or a qualified audit or a clean audit, which is typically what we get. You know, so they're two separate animals.
Well, I raised question, however, is what do the elected auditors do? We, and it's defined in the township code. What they actually do, I don't know. In all my years, I've never had any interaction with them.
It typically meets once a year, and it's usually, if I remember correctly, it's, I've only had, I've only sat in, I believe, two of those meetings so far. It's usually done right after our board reorganization. They will have a meeting, and they'll go over a couple of issues, but it's not in detail with what regard to a certified public accountant firm does.
I was an auditor for a while, and I don't think we did anything.
I thought the answer was that.
That's quite an admission, Ed.
Just for clarity purposes, that's all, you know what I mean?
I fit right in with that, Joe.
That's the order number nine.
Well, the pay sucks for that, too, so that's okay, you know?
We have the adoption of the resolution of the 2020-37 tax levy for 2021. Again, for this, for this given year, there is no tax increase, which is good for the residents. I believe, off the top of my head, that's at least the 13th year we haven't had a real estate millage increase. Well, maybe the 14th, I'd have to check my notes on that. For the general, the general side, you have 4.85 mills. On deck side, you had 6.10 mills. The street lighting, 7.5 mills. On the fire protection side, it's 1.55 mills. On the recreation side, .40 mills. And on the rescue side, .43 mills. And that gives you the 14.08 mills that we, that we would have for 2021 and that we had in the past years. So, we would need that approved for tonight's meeting. Other than that, we, you know, you have a couple other agenda items. You have a couple resignations that you have. Two, two separate items that I would probably like to run by you for tonight. We received from the Shammany School District, the Shammany is requesting a waiver of a penalty. This is in regards to the sewer fund or the, let's say, the sewer billing aspect. On 6/30/2020, they were invoiced. They're saying they did not receive the invoices. They're requesting a waiver for $870.37, and that's dealing with four accounts. Again, I don't have that authority nor the finance director to waive a penalty. So, we wanted to bring that forward for tonight as an item on the manager's section.
What's the amount of the penalty?
That's the penalty.
What's that for, the schools sewer bills or something, or?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's basically, I believe, for Tawanka, Lower South, Propressing, and Fertabar.
Have you ever...
No, that's okay.
Have you ever had any problems with people not receiving?
No, well, neither have we had them with, as far as payment either. So, I mean, they have been prompt with payments in the past, but I don't know if it maybe was COVID-related. I don't know if they were shut down for a period of time. All they said is that they didn't receive it, so I do not know, you know, what the particular issue was.
And what was that for the month of June?
This is for the period ending 6/30/2020.
That's last year's fiscal year then for them, too. Don't they start a new fiscal year on July 1st?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Has Melvin paid yet?
They paid, they paid the amount. Now, this is just the penalty aspect, that they're asking them to be waived. So, they paid the actual fee for the quarter per se, so they made that payment. Now, they want to get, potentially have the waiver of the penalty be waived by the board.
Okay.
All right.
And the penalty amount is? Okay.
Frank, can I ask you a question? Frank Dillon? Am I permitted to vote on that if it comes up in the, in the manager's report? Is there any type of, on the waiver of the penalty fees for the school district? Will that present any type of conflict? I know this is, this just be, I just became aware of this, or I would have asked you earlier?
Well, it is your employer, and I suspect we'll have three votes to do it anyhow. So, just out of caution, I think I'd just abstain for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I believe I have one more. Hold on. While I do that, Mark, did you want to go through any of the items that you were... Especially the district court?
Hey, Joe, can I, can I ask a question about number 10 and 11? Are those positions already been filled, or are we looking for people to fill that out? The two resignations.
Well, I know number 11, Ed, because we spoke about that last night at the VAC meeting. Number 11, John James's resignation, is, they're looking for someone to fill that spot. I don't know if any, if any resumes or letter of interest have been... I don't know if if any if any um resumes or letter of interest have been received by township administration, but that's going to be an open spot.
Okay, all right. How about number ten? Is that the is that the planning commission? I mean, he he's been on a planning commission ever since I was on the planning commission, and that's thirty eight years ago, you know?
I I I I'm not aware of anybody that's seen that on that, but yeah, maybe Chris knows who on that, but I'm not aware of it.
I thought those were the original plans for the Buck Hotel, right? Back in the seventeen hundreds when you were on?
That's right. They thought it was gonna be a historical building. It is historical.
Ed, it's.
Yes, Chris.
Hi, it's a question. No letters have been received um with those vacancies, so they're open.
Okay, thank.
Thank you.
And I don't I don't obviously be on our webpage for these are their openings.
Yeah.
Is there deadline? We do we post? Do we post it? It has to be like a deadline, however, every many months or weeks to fill them? How does that work?
So do we have to advertise it?
Oh, we have to advertise it. Um, we're getting ready for the organization. Uh, that's me. That's me. Um. And uh the time to get things in for the reorganization meeting is uh like to have everything by December sixteen.
Okay.
If not, it will be approved uh the second meeting in January.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, how you doing? Uh, listen, what we're gonna be working on very shortly, we're gonna it the old district court. We're gonna divide it into three sections that anybody in the township can use for whatever, like blood drives, uh the police use it for meetings, interviews, things like that. But we're gonna start working on that hopefully within about two weeks. That should take us that should keep us busy for most of the most of the cold months. Joe, you have a better idea? Joe, you have a better idea of what we can use it for, actually?
Sure, no problem. I was I was actually more talking about the the roof aspect than when we're to make one on the roof.
Oh, okay. I get it. Yeah, they have the the dumpster sitting out there. The roofer is he's he's planning to do the job in one day. He's got ten guys ready, but he's he's been uh when he has his guys available, he's been uh the weather hasn't cooperated with him. Now, he was supposed to do it uh Monday, uh last Friday or Monday, it got rained out. He's planning on this Friday, and they're calling for rain now, so I'm I don't know if he's gonna move it up. Or maybe I luck out and he show up tomorrow, but it looks like it'll probably get done next week. And uh I'm I'm still have to check out the gutters. I'm not sure if we have to replace the gutters on there. The ones that are on there aren't in bad shape. I just have to see if we have to put bigger industrial ones in there.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, as far as the the building per se, well, ideally, what we're kind of shooting for is looking at whether it be an emergency type setting, God forbid, you know, if people have lost have lost their power, um need shelter to stay warm, sort of like a warming center. Um, we would also have a component that possibly could be used for the recreation department. Um, and actuality, the the emergency management side and the fire marshal office. So you may see like a combo where you have at least one permanent wall and then like a partition where you have sliding partitions going back and forth where i- if we need to have a bigger room per se, we can. Um, but if not, then it would be the the basically utilized for three different events or it three different type of activities, basically, and we could cross that barrier at a later point in time. But that's kind of the genesis, what we want to do, so we want to look at the, of course, the electrical, the plumbing, the bathrooms. Um, and then, you know, check out the flooring and take it from there. Um, but, you know, we're hopeful during the winter, we'll have, you know, hopefully it's not too cold and there's not too much snow out there that we could uh address the public works guys and have them go in there and do a little building for us. Um, but that's what we're hoping to get to accomplish, and your bond dollars would be paying for the majority of that. So it's it should not be too much of an exposure on our general fund. Um, as far as the chief here, buddy.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, could could you talk about some of that? Working on.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Good, is is there any topic items that you would want to discuss tonight, chief?
No, we're just busy. Got a lot going on.
Okay. All right, um, as far as Ryan, I believe Ryan had a particular class. I I if he's not here, Ryan, are you here? Uh, Ryan is not here. I I do believe that there was some sort of individual class that was going on that he had to attend. Um, for the most part, there wasn't that much activity on the fireside. Um, I believe there might have been fifteen to twenty different events that they had. And of course, the one where the the lady that is missing. Um, so they're trying, you know, they're passing the word around, trying to find the one resident that's been lost. Uh, and to my knowledge, she still is lost, so uh we want to stay on top of that and, you know, whether that I believe it's on a Facebook page, you know, what the description is of of that lady. Uh, hopefully, she's not on a train in uh in, you know, upper Bucks County. Um, but we just wanted to mention that aspect. And and as far as the other items we do have going forward, we'll talk about in the manager's report is the uh is the is the Red Cross event we have coming up. Uh, we have one more for this year. Uh, we also have the Toys for Tots. The Toys for Tots um would be, I think, the ending date for collection is December tenth. We do have the the box outside, um, so if people wanted to um provide some toys for the children uh that that would work and we would make sure that Toys for Tots get that. Um, and I think Ryan also mentioned that we're still collecting as far as, you know, food for the for the various entities, the food banks that we could give to. So if people still want to do that during this holiday season, that's still an active thing for for the Fire Marshal's Office. But that's all I have for today.
I I have a request. Um, at the reorganization meeting, I would like to visit uh all the, when I say visit, I mean, go through all the committees that we have and see where we're at with them all. As far as if they're meeting, I remember I had mentioned it before. Some committees haven't met for five years, so I really want to go through through them.
So.
I think that it did run up last year, you know? Some of these boards are seem to be boards in name only and and.
Exactly.
If that means cleaning up of an ordinance or require the cleaning up of an ordinance, you may have some committees that really don't exist hypothetically, so um we could have a legal look at that and check out the ordinance too for that also as far as compliance.
Okay.
Can I? Yeah, can I get in a little bit on the Petrucci Hotel?
Mom, mom, mom.
Can I? Can I have some a couple of minutes to to talk about our visit there? Debbie and I visited the uh hotels that they have in Warminster.
They're apart, they're apart.
Uh apartment, whatever, yeah, apartments. And we talked a lot about uh the possibility of them doing more things with Lower South. Uh, and I think they're gonna put to put forth a sketch plan uh to give us some ideas of what they're thinking may be. And um along with the hotel, bringing some things from from the uh ice cream place, Barrett, that's it? What's it called? Besse, Besse's? Anyway, Brewster's, Brewster's, yeah, up to seven eleven. So we go from Bristol Road to Brewster's and uh they were very interested in in uh the possibility of us utilizing them. They know what they're doing as a developer and we don't. And uh I'm look kind of looking forward to them developing something. It may not happen, but they the Rob seemed to be very interested in in helping Lower South to do something with that area. So we don't know what that what that's gonna what that's gonna entail. However, he was he did have a lot of interest in it and it was more of the way they started in Warminster uh with a small shopping center and then they started expanding from there. So I think they're very interested in doing something. Uh, I think that would help Mrs. Bromley also because she uh she has that piece of ground that she would like to sell. So I'm just kind of kind of looking forward to them developing one something, and I don't know what that's gonna be.
Well, well, Mike, Mike, I think you're listening to. We have a pending application for land development, don't we?
I don't know, do we?
Yes, I mean, my recollection is they came before you several years ago and presented you with a sketch plan. Uh, and you gave them the thumbs up on it to proceed. And I believe there's currently pending a a land development plan uh which you're gonna be asked to vote on, and that vote would would be caught. I mean, this is the only property they own in the municipality right now.
Um, I'm not sure who you're talking about, Petrucci or us or who?
Petrucci, correct.
They have they have a piece of ground now that they want to develop? I mean, other than the apartment building?
No, no, it's. Mike, you want to talk?
I'm sorry, who?
I'm sorry. That that's all they have. Sorry.
Yeah, that's to my knowledge, and that that's the the focus at this point.
Yeah, the second the second property that's being considered is the Trivo Shoe Store.
Right, which is before me. I'm not really versed in that one.
Yeah, if they that also came in at some point, that project, if this one goes through, then Triv I it's anticipated Trivos will come in, but we the the we need to get the improvements uh to the system to accommodate this project and then accommodate uh the the shoe store. So if if the the Bromley property is developed, there's the Trivo Shoe Store sitting there waiting to come next.
Okay, but what I what I develop, what I talk to these guys about, and Debbie can can back me up on this, is we talked to them about a plan of what they want to do. Uh, and and if they already have some development stuff going, that's fine. Put that on a sketch plan, which is what we mostly talked about before the supervisors to say, okay, here's what we'd like to do, and are you guys gonna approve this? So in that in that fashion, though, they're not gonna be spending a hell of a lot of money to try to come up with a small plan, not necessarily a small plan, but a plan to develop that area. And in addition to that, we've got to worry in Salem also, because we're only half the street. And I I'd look forward to them developing something um that that they can show us what they plan to do with that whole thing. And include the shoe store, include the whatever else they had, the apartment bill, the apartment building, that would be all fine. But I'd I'd like to see what they plan.
But they.
Can can they develop property that they don't own or that they don't have control over or this this would be a like a vision for that area?
Well, I it seems to me the vision for the area was when the board of supervisors in what I don't know what year adopted the the town center concept.
Yeah.
The board of supervisors established what's allowed to be there. How it's developed then depends on the individual property owners and the Bromley or the only property in which they have a an interest right now is the Bromley property. The rest of the properties are, you know, owned by other individuals.
Well, I I no, I understand that, and I was involved with the original ones back in twenty twelve sometime. And we went to visit all of the the business people along that route, and most of them seemed to be interested in developing new stuff for that area. And I would just like to see what Petrucci may be interested in in developing that whole property. Uh, and it doesn't appear to me that the hotel on its own is not gonna fly. So if they have some other ideas and other development things that they'd like to put forth, uh, I'd like to see them do that. In fact, he he indicated that they would be doing that. So we'll just have, in my opinion, we just wait and see if they come up with anything. If they don't, okay, it's a dead issue anyway. But if they do, I think maybe we could take advantage of them as being developers. Uh, because we don't we don't know anything about developers anyway, be being developers, I should say. But I don't I see what they come up with and sorry, Deb, go ahead.
I was gonna say, they did want to speak to us.
For what?
A future workshop. They did. They said that they would be happy to meet with us at a future workshop.
Yeah, with a sketch plan.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And I understand what you're saying, Frank, that we don't own the properties there. Um, but I think it's like a vision perhaps, um, and I understand what Ed's saying. Um, the rest, I mean, the Petrucci um possible development wouldn't be um I don't know what I want to say, would be a beginning to somehow be an improvement in that area.
Well, they're interested in developing they're interested in developing that area. I definitely got that's uh uh opinion from them, and they are gonna look at uh creating a sketch plan to say, okay, here's what it looks like now. Here's what we think we can do. And that would be up to them then to purchase those properties and and that kind of stuff uh that we don't really have anything to do with. They they know how to do that stuff and we don't. I don't know. That's my opinion, and I I'm waiting to get some response from them to say, yes, they want to do something. Or they want to do a sketch plan or whatever. Because I they also know that the that the apartment house isn't gonna fly without something else there. That's the definite opinion that I got from him. Anyway.
Thanks for filling us in and and taking the time, you and Deb, to go up there and meet with them and tour their their facilities, really. So thank you.
By the way, it is, they put together a really, really nice apartment complex there. It's really, really well done. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Um, if is there anything else pending on here? Joe Galdau?
Not that I have, sir.
Okay, you want to take a four minute, five minute break and come back at twenty five after seven twenty six? We'll get the other and get the other one started?
Sure.
Are we logging out of this?
No, no, stay in this, but I would recommend muting and turning your video off.
Okay.
If you're gonna leave. So we'll meet back here at seven twenty six.